Mine's from like
Slice line, what is it?
Twelve years ago.
Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Meiser, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
We are here today with open hands and open hearts, ready to depend on you to help us through today and all it will bring our way. Help us come to you for guidance, strength, provision, and protection as we face tough choices and hard situations. Help us remember our belovedness. Help us to remember that we are your children and your representative to the world around us. Help us live today in a way that brings honor. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Briggs, please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Meiser?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of August 14th, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 14th meeting and dispense the formal reading.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Once again, we're holding this city commission meeting electronically and in person. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, and we will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. I would also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting appear to be doing so with the appropriate distancing and face masks. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a presentation from the Auditor of State Representative. It is an award for our finance department, and it is very fitting that our finance director, Michelle Reader, is here to accept that award.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay with the mask?
Yes.
All right. My name is Lori Brody, and I'm the Northwest Regional Liaison, and it's my honor to be here today on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber. And I'm here to present the City of Sandusky with the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction. And I just have a couple of comments I wanted to present to the public and to the mayor and council. It's important to note that this award puts the City of Sandusky in a very select group. The state auditor audits about 5,900 entities per year, schools, municipalities, anybody who spends taxpayer dollars. And only about 3% to 5% are even eligible for this award. And some of you remember I was here not that long ago, and you did win this, so I should start it out with congratulations again. I do want to read this real quick, what it takes, just for anybody watching who might not have heard the last presentation. The Auditor of State Award with Distinctions presented to local governments, school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the following criteria of a clean audit report. You have to have a complete comprehensive annual financial report within six months of fiscal year end, have a clean audit with no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or question costs. You must have no other financial concerns. The management letter contains no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than $10,000, lack of timely report submission, reconciliation issues, or failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recovery, or public meeting or public records issues. And this award represents the hard work of every city employee who strives each day to achieve accounting excellence. I do want to recognize the mayor and commissioners, you call them here, who have done an excellent job accounting for every dollar here in the City of Sandusky. I specifically want to recognize Michelle Reader, your finance director, and her staff for their outstanding leadership and professionalism, and their commitment to fiscal integrity. It's a job well done by your staff. On behalf of the Auditor of State Keith Faber, I'd like to present this award to the City of Sandusky. Not sure where the camera is. And I will say they just won this again, so 2018 and 2019 for sure. Congratulations. It's a big honor, and we really appreciate it, and Auditor Faber thanks you for all your hard work, so.
Thank you. Thank you. We certainly want to acknowledge and thank the Auditor of State for this award, and it goes without saying that we realize we are in very select company, 3% to 5%. We have won this award before. We will never take it for granted. I can assure you that Ms. Reader does not take it for granted, nor does any of her staff. They work tirelessly to account for every dollar, and they obviously are doing it very well. Thank you, Michelle, for that, and thanks to the Auditor of State.
For our whole city, so congratulations to all of you doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll be back next year, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I believe I am sharing my screen with you guys in the commission chambers. Can you verify?
We don't have you up yet.
Okay. How about now?
See your initials.
I'll just read them.
Okay. I think it should be on your screen, but if it's not, I'm going to read them now. Tim Schwanger wrote in at 362 Sheffield Way regarding consent agenda item B. The budget amendment includes budget cuts in the police and fire departments approximately $600,000. Police and fire staffing is currently at a low point when compared to recent history. Basic city services must be the number one priority when spending taxpayer dollars. The city manager and city commission must reconsider moving forward with hiring a municipal financial advisor and maintaining the position of assistant city manager, which created the spending of an additional $90,000 plus benefits for a new police chief. These are only two examples of major spending practices the city commission needs to bring under control during these times of financial uncertainty. The second is in regards to item number two. Why is the city spending $147,000 paving J.C. Park's entryway instead of prioritizing expenditures? And that comment came from Ms. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street.
That it, Ms. Briggs?
That is it, Mr. President.
We will address those questions as we move to that legislation. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
No motion.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have nine consent agendas to consider this evening. Any of you wish to move any of those items to our regular agenda? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole.
Chairman.
Commissioner Poole, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I think there's a question about item B, so I want you to bring that down so they can talk about that.
Item G.
Item B. B as in boy.
Item B will be moved to the regular agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is approving a planned unit development on First Street, and that is its second reading. Item C is a contract with Serving Our Seniors for transportation services with the Sandusky Moving on to the next slide, if I can get it. There we go. Item D is a lease agreement with Serving Our Seniors for vehicles for the Sandusky Transit System. Item E is a contract with the Erie County Department of Job and Family Services for transportation services with the Sandusky Transit System. Item F is the acceptance of nine parcels into the land reutilization program. Item G is permission to dispose of vehicles and miscellaneous items. Item H is permission to dispose of personal property and equipment. And item I is regarding a liquor permit membership change.
Having heard these resolutions and ordinances, gentlemen and ladies, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meiser.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, and declared all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda. Shall take effect in accordance with the affected reflected in the ordinance or resolution, whether it is in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the resolution and ordinances.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those resolution ordinances are passed. We will now turn to our regular agenda, including item B from the consent agenda. Will not be our first item if you will present it, Ms. Briggs.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number one is an ordinance adopting amendment number two to ordinance number 20-058, passed by this city commission on March 23rd, 2020, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2020, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. We've had a question from the audience regarding this agenda item. Who would like to respond to that question?
Michelle.
Michelle, are you back to your desk?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commission President. The question was about funders and how we're looking to cut additional funds from the police and fire department. This budget amendment is just an adjustment to our budget that we passed initially. As you recall, we did that in March, just as COVID hit, and we said we would have to come back to commission and make adjustments as necessary. So the first part of this amendment, there's over $2.9 million of adjustments to the general fund. This is not because we're doing additional cuts. This just reflects what we've already had happen this year. So again, no additional cuts are included in this. We just have a lot of attrition, people that have retired. We have where we did administration pay cuts and just regular budget amendments for items that we did not want to be spent this year when we went back through the budget. So that's what this budget amendment is doing.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
I bet he hasn't discussed.
Wes, you're muted.
We've lost Mr. Poole for the moment.
Yeah.
Got him.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the orders.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
I bet he hasn't discussed.
Wes, you're muted.
We've lost Mr. Poole for the moment.
Yeah.
Got him.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the orders.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the orders.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Mr. Poole?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present formerly item number one? Now we'll consider it number two.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real properties located at 1501 South Forest Drive, Sandusky, and identified as parcel number 58-01925.000 for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Lasko, are you out there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Wonder if you can just fill us in on this next opportunity on the South Side?
Yes, through you, Mr. President, to members of the commission. And I know it probably feels like we bring one of these every meeting or every other meeting. But just as a reminder, this is sort of an advancement of the Neighborhood Initiative plan specific to the South Side neighborhood, where one of the recommendations was to strategically acquire and demolish properties in and around the MacArthur Park and Churchill Park area. We have been doing that fairly aggressively, in addition with our partners at the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation. This, again, is sort of an advancement of that. So what's before commission is the purchase of a two-unit property on South Forest. The purchase price would be $25,000. Ultimately, there'll be additional legislation later on down the road for the demolition of this property utilizing community development block grant funds. And I do want to just point out, as a two-unit property at $25,000, this is identical to the two-unit property that was approved by commission in July at 2106 Parkview. So they're fairly identical in size and price. But again, just an advancement of the initiative on that South Side as we begin to tackle these properties one by one. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Additional discussion, Commissioners? Mr. Lasko, I for one am pleased that we continue to claw property into our ownership out there. It's like you eat an elephant one bite at a time, and we've certainly been doing that, and there's more parcels to acquire. But I certainly do not think that we are overpaying for these. I think we found the market always sets the price, and it's doing that here. So thank you for bringing another one to us, and I hope that we vote favorably on this.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Wes, I see you're unmuted now. Mr. Poole?
I guess, yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the order.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present the next item?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Burdew and LLC of Sandusky, Ohio for the J.C. Park Connector Trail Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. I believe we have a question proposed by the public regarding this piece of legislation, and I'm not sure if the appropriate person to answer that question is either Mr. Whipser or Mr. Klein. It probably deals more with the direction of money.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Through the commission president to the commission, and please, Aaron, dive in. The funds for this are actually Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative projects that are predominantly from the Dorn Foundation, and we've consolidated those in other non-capital dollars that would not easily be redistributed to other projects to this project. And we did want to make sure that we did maintain a modest capital budget for parks, even as we reduced across the board, as I mentioned earlier in the year. Our goal is not to reduce spending for any one program entirely anywhere. So, and Aaron, please jump in if you want to provide more detail than that.
Thank you, Mr. Whipser. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brady, other commissioners, staff, and audience. I'll start with the donations. First, the Lang Trust of the Sandusky Library has generously donated a third year of sculptures through the Sculpture on Loan Program provided by the Midwest Sculpture Initiative. The eight new selected sculptures in their respective locations were unanimously approved by the Public Arts and Commission. We'd ask for a motion to accept that donation from Lang Trust.
So move.
Motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. With our thanks.
Next, a thank you to the Ohio State University Alumni Club of Erie County for the installation of a memorial honoring Jim Corso at Facer Park. The full value of the in-kind donation, including perennials from Barnes Nursery and a plaque from Belkony Monuments, is $700. I also know several commissioners, including Dave, have been really at the forefront of honoring Mr. Corso. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Again, with our thanks.
Thank you. And then finally, for donations, a thank you to Barb Manor, who, in addition to planting and maintaining the zinnias at the Underwater Lions Park this year, has sanded and repainted the lion statues. I just want to ask for a motion to accept that in-kind donation.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. With our thanks.
Moving on to the new and old business, starting with the police department. First, we want to congratulate Jared Oliver, who has been named as the next police chief of the City of Sandusky. We're still working out the exact start date for Mr. Oliver, but are excited to welcome him into the fold. As many of you know, Chief Orzek will not be going far, as he will transition full-time into our assistant city manager position as soon as Chief Oliver is able to take his position. Just to comment on the evolution of that, as you know, a few years ago, we asked John to take on some additional duties as a safety service director to help in the day-to-day administrative roles with police and fire, and then began to expand that role earlier this year as assistant city manager. I think John's going to keep a very busy slate as we go forward. In addition to continuing to help with the day-to-day oversight of police and fire, he's added fleet, something that he has a lot of experience in, to his day-to-day work. With the departure coming for Matt Lasko, we're looking at some other things that he might be able to help with on a day-to-day basis. But he'll also have a very active role in the community, and is going to be my main person, working with Public Works and others on the Justice Center project. So I just want to make sure those who had questions about that position understand that John will stay very busy, and I think we'll get our money's worth out of carrying that position in the budget as we go forward. With that, we're also looking to hire a law director. Commissioner Murray has sat on the selection committee, and we have selected a final candidate. He's actually on vacation this week, and so we wanted you to be able to meet him in person. So we'll be circulating his biography and resume earlier this, just a little bit later this week, and we'll have him here in person for your consideration on October 12th, and of course can answer questions in between now and then. But we look forward to bringing you that later. Moving on to the fire department, on October 4th, firefighter Derek Shepherd will retire after 30 years. Oh, by the way, I meant to do one last thing. I wanted to thank Commissioner Twine and the entire police chief selection committee for their work. It was a really difficult decision, not because Jared wasn't amazing. He was amazing, but we had two amazing candidates, Scott Dahlgren from our department being the other, and we look forward to his continued leadership. Their rankings of both candidates were high, and ultimately, that advice mattered a lot to me as I went forward. So thank you, Naomi, and please pass on.
Absolutely.
Thanks to the rest of the committee on that as well. And I apologize, I had a note here, but it was in scribble, so thank you for that.
But thank you.
No worries. Thank you. On October 4th, firefighter Derek Shepherd will retire after 30 years of honorable service from Sandusky Fire Department. Firefighter Shepherd is one of the City of Sandusky's first paramedics, and is known for his calm demeanor in handling chaotic emergency situations. We'd like to thank him for his dedicated 30 years of service and wish him a happy and healthy retirement. Moving on to finance, the city will be carrying out a request for qualifications for a municipal investment advisor in the upcoming weeks for Public Works. The Shade Mylander Plaza Fountain has been turned off for the season, as the plastic mine that connects the filtration system is in need of repair, and further operation found prior to the repairs could cause damage. Additionally, mortar repair work is currently being formed around the plaza. Also, various divisions have begun routine winterization throughout the city, including removal of docks and buoys, draining of park fountains, enclosure of restrooms, and other facilities, saving any facility in use for business or recreation until last, unless weather or temperature dictates otherwise. On November 2nd, Street Crews will implement winter traffic patterns on Mylan Road overpass at the Butler Street off-ramp. And then finally, for Public Works, residents are reminded that there are two fall cleanup opportunities available free of charge. First, drive-through drop-off day will take place on Saturday, October 10th, at the Shelby Street Boat Launch overflow parking. Second, residents are welcome to drop-off yard waste at Barnes Nursery at 1630 Camp Road in Huron on Saturday, October 17th, and Sunday, October 18th. For further details or questions on that, you can call 419-627-5829. Again, that's 419-627-5829. And for the Planning Department, the Planning Commission meeting for October 28th is scheduled at 4:30. Board of Zoning Appeals for October 15th is scheduled at 4:30. The Landmark Commission for October 21st is also at 4:30. And the Arts and Culture Commission meeting for October 20th is scheduled for 5:15 PM. Unless there's further notice, all of those meetings will be held remotely and can be accessed from the city's website. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
Just with respect to the law of the research, I wanted to let the commission know that we have some really excellent candidates, and I'm excited about the young man, and he's relatively young, that is going to be offered the position by Mr. Whipser. And I've talked with you, a number of you, all of you, about that process, and it went very well, and I think you'll be impressed when you meet the young man.
So we'll be circulating his biography and resume earlier this, just a little bit later this week, and we'll have him here in person for your consideration on October 12th, and of course can answer questions in between now and then. But we look forward to bringing you that later. Moving on to the fire department, on October 4th, firefighter Derek Shepherd will retire after 30 years. Oh, by the way, I meant to do one last thing. I wanted to thank Commissioner Twine and the entire police chief selection committee for their work. It was a really difficult decision, not because Jared wasn't amazing, he was amazing, but we had two amazing candidates, Scott Dahlgren from our department being the other. We look forward to his continued leadership. Their rankings of both candidates were high, and ultimately that advice mattered a lot to me as I went forward. So thank you, Naomi, and please pass on thanks to the rest of the committee on that as well. And I apologize, I had a note here, but it was in scribble, so thank you for that.
But thank you.
No worries, thank you. On October 4th, firefighter Derek Shepherd will retire after 30 years of honorable service from the Sandusky Fire Department. Firefighter Shepherd is one of the city of Sandusky's first paramedics and is known for his calm demeanor in handling chaotic emergency situations. We'd like to thank him for his dedicated 30 years of service and wish him a happy and healthy retirement. Moving on to finance, the city will be carrying out a request for qualifications for a municipal investment advisor in the upcoming weeks. For public works, the Shade Mylander Plaza fountain has been turned off for the season as the plastic line that connects the filtration system is in need of repair, and further operation found prior to the repairs could cause damage. Additionally, mortar repair work is currently being formed around the plaza. Also, various divisions have begun routine winterization throughout the city, including removal of docks and buoys, draining of park fountains, enclosure of restrooms, and other facilities, saving any facility in use for business or recreation until last unless the weather or temperature dictates otherwise. On November 2nd, street crews will implement winter traffic patterns on Mylan Road, overpass at the Butler Street off-ramp. And then finally, for public works, residents are reminded that there are two fall cleanup opportunities available free of charge. First, drive-through drop-off day will take place on Saturday, October 10th, at the Shelby Street Bowl Launch overflow parking. Second, residents are welcome to drop off yard waste at Barnes Nursery at 1630 Camp Road in Huron on Saturday, October 17th, and Sunday, October 18th. For further details or questions on that, you can call 419-627-5829. Again, that's 419-627-5829. And for the planning department, the planning commission meeting for October 28th is scheduled at 4:30. Board of Zoning Appeals for October 15th is scheduled at 4:30. The Landmark Commission for October 21st is also at 4:30, and the Arts and Culture Commission meeting for October 20th is scheduled for 5:15 p.m. Unless there's further notice, all of those meetings will be held remotely and can be accessed from the city's website. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Just with respect to the law of research, I wanted to let the commission know that we have some really excellent candidates, and I'm excited about the young man, and he's relatively young, that is going to be offered the position by Mr. Whoopsir. And I've talked with you, a number of you, all of you, about that process, and it went very well, and I think you'll be impressed when you meet the young man.
I thank Commissioner Murray for spearheading that effort, and also Commissioner Twine and her committee for the policing. We don't take these things for granted. These are very important roles that you fill in doing this for us. They're such critical department heads. Every, at this point, every one in this city is a critical person, but these are especially important roles that you're playing a role in filling, and we know and trust that you've done a good job, both of you. So thank you for your additional effort in this. Additional questions for the city manager? If not, the next item on our agenda is items of old business. Commissioners, are there any items of old business you'd like to discuss? Hearing nothing, we'll move to items of new business. Any items of new business you'd like to discuss?
Mr. Chairman.
Would that be Commissioner Harris?
Poole.
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment. I voted yes on the project for J.C. Park because I actually like the project, and I think we should have done it a long time ago, because it connects the neighborhoods, and it will be good for that area. I do, I do think, though, the comments that came from the citizens are appropriate with regard to our priorities about how we spend the money. I would suggest that, you know, it is a philosophy that you want to try and spend a little bit of money everywhere. I don't totally support that because I think that some services are more valuable than others. Having said that, I would suggest that I don't see any way that I actually support the concept in a city of less than 25,000 people with the budget problems we have, hiring, having an Assistant City Manager. I don't see the work there for, to justify that expenditure. I recognize and have noticed recently that we have a significant amount of crime increasing in our community, and that's not taken care of by more oversight. That is taken care of by boots on the ground. So as we have allowed the, as we saw when we reduced the, redid the budget, that the money that's been taken out represents salaries of people that have retired, and we are simply stretching our police department, working them harder, and the crime is simply increasing. So I just present that, that I see absolutely no reason for the city of Sandusky of this size, a city of this size, to be hiring an Assistant City Manager. We don't have money to do a justice center. The justice center also should be probably overseen by the new police chief, and having the old police chief oversee the new police chief, as has been provide, has been put forward by the manager, I'm not sure that's really a good process. The new police chief should be able to run his department without the old police chief telling him what to do. So on many, on all those levels, we don't need a manager. The new police chief should have an opportunity to mold his department the way he chooses and make the changes that may hopefully reduce the crime we're having, crime we're having here. And so that's where I'm at on this, and wait to hear what other commissioners have to say about it. I see no justification for an Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
If I may. I think it would be a waste to simply throw away the years of experience and knowledge that Chief Orzak has obtained in this city. I've come to know him well enough to know that he's not going to ride herd over the new police chief. He's going to be a resource that's available when that is needed, all the more so, although Deputy Oliver is very, very familiar with the city of Sandusky, being a resident. He's not intimately familiar with the Sandusky Police Department, so I think that also is very important for, as part of a transition. And I think, you know, I reject the notion that management doesn't bring a tremendous amount of skill to the process, whether it's parks and rec or engineering or policing. There is value in experienced management being available to direct the, what's going on. And so I strongly support retaining Chief Orzak in that position. You know, if it were someone else coming in new, it would be a different situation. But here we have someone who's intimately familiar with the city and provides a great right-hand person to Mr. Whoopsir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I agree, I believe, having Chief Orzak stay on as Assistant City Manager, he actually also brings a lot of historical background to the city of Sandusky, as well as his connections in the community. As Commissioner Murray indicated, he will not run roughshod over the new chief of police. He will be a great mentor to the new chief of police, and again, maintain a level of consistency, but also allow enough space and opportunity for the new chief of police to do what he needs to do. But again, I think one thing sometimes we tend to forget about is the historical knowledge that a person brings to a position such as the Assistant City Manager, and also the working relationship he has with other department heads within the city. I think that brings a lot to the table. I like to maintain that type of consistency. I think he'll be a great help to City Manager Whoopsir and all the things, yes. We got a lot of balls juggling in the air, a lot of things happening. The pandemic kind of slowed some things down, but again, I believe that Chief Orzak is the person for the Assistant City Manager's position. One more thing on the justice center. There's been a lot of discussion. I've heard a lot of things in the community about that. But again, I think Chief Orzak's experience, his historical knowledge, and then the ideas that Jared Oliver will bring to the table will help us to, I believe, be successful in that endeavor.
Thank you. I agree with both of your comments. None of us have to remind ourselves that Chief Orzak, in his tenure as police chief, put this city on the cutting edge of community relations, and I will always feel that he is responsible for guiding us through some very, what could have been some very troubled waters in the last few years. This is not a reward for having served as a police chief. He's already received his reward for that, and a lot of gray hair, I might add. But what it is, is an ability, it's an opportunity for this city to make use of what I will call an asset to this city, and that's an asset in Chief Orzak's knowledge, his experience, and his respect in this community. That is going to transfer very nicely into the position as Assistant City Manager. I am looking forward to his next step in employment in this city, and I wish him well at it. Ms. Briggs, are there any communication from residents regarding city business to be read?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one comment. Oops, wrong screen. From Ms. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street, she wrote in with a handful of questions and comments. What does the city hope to achieve hiring an investment advisor? With tonight's announcement of a third firefighter leaving the city, how many firefighters does the city have to be down before a fire station closes due to the lack of personnel? The September Finance Committee meeting produced the following fact: Moody's reduced the city's rating from an AA3 to an A1 rating. After five years of auditing, the city auditors have suggested taking all of the department's credit cards away and placing them in the possession of the city treasurer where they belong. The city's population growth is not substantial enough to support the city's spending. CDBG grants are at risk if the census does not produce desirable results so the city can stay in the program. Cedar Point Season Passes will continue into 2021, collecting a one-time admissions tax.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. I count eight comments in there, and I would suggest that you, that we divide those comments up among city staff and produce a response to Ms. Johnson, either by mail or electronically, whichever she desires. And also, we will post those answers that we provide perhaps on our website.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Commissioner Murray.
Some of these are a little bit more pressing, and I'm able to address them if that would be in order.
Certainly.
Some of these issues, particularly, let me kind of work in backwards order in terms of the ones that I think have particular merit, or importance, I should say. They all have merit, of course. But the, with respect to Season Passes, I want folks to understand that what Cedar Point is doing is recognizing revenue in a very proper but kind of complicated accounting way. There is a concept known as revenue recognition, and the timing of when that is. And so the income ta, or this, the emissions tax is not going to be recognized all in the year that they were sold. It's not going to be recognized all this year. It's not going to be recognized all next year. That's going to come in over a period of time according to some very sophisticated rules that they have. So that's not going to be a one-time emissions tax today, tomorrow, or next year. And it is true that the census results are troubling. The fact that the president has cut off the time for conducting the census is very hurtful to our community. I'm hopeful that the courts will force an extension of that, but that's right. So if you're listening and you haven't completed the census, doggone it, you really need to do it to help your city out. And with respect to the credit cards, I want to address that because the way that comment came across, I don't think it was intended, but the way it came across was that there's somehow something improper that we're doing. The disconnect that they cited is the, is that we don't, we are not presently handling the credit cards the way we say on paper we're going to handle the credit cards. What we're doing right now is totally fine. The question is, or the issue is, we simply need to document it. This, if this were a serious problem, we wouldn't have received the award that we did at the beginning of this meeting. So this is just a comment. It's not a finding. It's not a, an indication that anything has been done that's wrong. And while I have the floor, Mr. Chairman, if I may, address one other issue.
Hey, Mr. Murray.
There is, there is an old saw out there. You'd think it'd be blunt by now, but there's an old saw, old saw out there that every time the city wants to complete a project, we dip into the water and sewer funds. You would have thought that would be dead by now or dulled by now, but it kind of rears its head every so often. Sometimes someone marking, walking outside with a pole, although I guess a little bit rainy today. So it doesn't happen that way. We have, in the city of, city of Sandusky and throughout Ohio, and almost every government in the United States, has what's called fund accounting. Let me just take this off for a moment, so I'm a little bit clear. That means that there are particular funds that are collected in certain accounts, and those monies may only be spent in those accounts. Money that goes into water and sewer has to be spent on water and sewer, and as I've said many times before, if it's not spent on water and sewer, someone's going to jail. We don't do it that way. There are comments out there circulating, and people begin to believe this stuff, and I wish people would just ask questions and find out the truth, but they believe this stuff because somebody posts it on Facebook. Shoreline Drive was not funded by the water and sewer departments. The rates that we pay as homeowners and business owners, and yes, I too have seen the rates go up, are set according to really the projects that the Ohio EPA requires us to complete. We do, when we replace a street, we do replace the water and sewer lines if they need it. Those funds are appropriately charged throughout the city and for 100 years, based upon the cost of putting the water and sewer lines in the ground. So yes, when we replaced Shoreline Drive, a portion of that was due to the water and sewer lines that needed to be replaced, and they were deep and they were old. I think that Mr. Waddington counted back to Abraham Lincoln was alive when some of them were installed. But, so no, those funds are not going to other projects in the city, and it's important to know that the rates were set as a result of a very comprehensive rate study back, done back in 2015. This commission approved the rates that were recommended by the rate study. Those haven't changed. They haven't been added to in order to be able to supplement any projects. So I just want to set the record straight in that regard. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes, I'd just like to continue that conversation with Commissioner Murray. With regard to water, first of all, is it not true that we spent water and sewer money paid for 50% of the email system that the city now uses, number one? And then number two, please explain how that ties in with what you just said about the money's only spent on water and sewer. Just explain how we arrived at the conclusion that that was appropriate.
Actually, that's, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's pretty simple. The fact of the matter is, the city of Sandusky is unusual in this regard. We aren't just a city. We run two major utilities. If we didn't have these major utilities, we wouldn't have the infrastructure, we wouldn't have the management needs that we have. We wouldn't have the email needs that we have. We wouldn't have the HR needs that we have, and we wouldn't have the legal and finance needs that we have. But because we are a city and two major utilities, we have a lot of other needs that we have to support, and those are supported in their adequate and fair share by those two utilities. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Well, I would suggest that sounded good, but it doesn't indicate that 50% of the email is used on sewer and water of those two utilities. I would suggest that it's an arbitrary decision that we made to use the money. And I tell you, we can do this every week with water and sewer money and come up with a justification for how it can be used on general fund. Why does it matter? Because the water bills go up when the fund goes down. Granted, we did set these rates based mostly on EPA issues that we are taking care of, but the suggestion that every dime that the sewer and water fund is spent on sewer and water, as you described, is just not, I don't believe is accurate. Now, with regard to credit cards, I would suggest that what you gave as an example, you're right, we did just get a clean audit. That audit simply says that every place you spent the money, you put it in the right box on the paperwork. The problem with the credit cards is that we did not follow our own policy for managing how they're utilized. The department heads are carrying these credit cards around, using them as they choose. Granted, it is within some large number of the budget, which we have found we just had to reduce. The fact is, we, the suggestion is that we have an obligation to take a little closer look at how the money is spent with credit cards and not just hand them out to eight people that they just use and we just check and, and check right in the box that it's spent. It's about the oversight that is not being done on it. Now, the fact that we think we have the money to pay for it isn't the issue. Good management practice says you take a little more control, like keeping the wat, keeping, keeping control of who has the credit card and what they're spending it on. And that's really, that's a different perspective than you take about what was written about our credit, our credit card deficiencies.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Thank you.
That is a brazen misstatement of the results of the audit. I would urge the public to review it for themselves, and, Mr. Poole, either you have forgotten what it said, or you did not read it, or you misunderstood it, but to suggest that the money's being misspent is completely wrong, because they didn't say that.
I didn't suggest that the money was misspent. I said that they said we're not managing it properly because we don't keep control of the credit cards. And because we don't keep as good a control as they said they would like, that is, that is in the policy that we wrote, we're not following it. That's the first thing I said. And number two, by not managing, we don't know what the money's being spent on. We're not managing it properly. I didn't say it was misspent. I said we don't know about it until it's already spent. That's my point. We are not following our own policy, which is an appropriate policy, and they pointed it out. So you missed, you misunderstood what I was saying.
Additional comments, Commissioners? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
(applause).[1798.83]